You need to unmute Commissioner Landon.
There is that. I hereby open the work session of the Planning Commission. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yeah.
Commit, Brenda, now you need to unmute.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Landon.
Present.
Commissioner Quagula.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
And we have Commissioner Bergen and McGinnley out today. So there you go.
Thank you very much. As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute during this portion of the meeting. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend, but not provide testimony. Development code update. I'll turn the time over to our city attorney for conflicts of interest.
Thank you Chair Landon, or Vice Chair Landon. So for, as a reminder, commissioners can only have a potential conflict of interest regarding the code update project because the commission's future recommendation to the city council isn't binding on the council. Commissioners with potential conflicts of interest must disclose the nature of the conflict and then can participate in the work session. And as again, I've, no, I've given this reminder multiple times, but an example related to the code update project is owning residential or commercial land in Springfield because property values can be affected by the proposed code changes.
At this time, I'll ask the commissioners to declare potential conflicts of interest. We'll start with Commissioner Quavilla.
Ah, yes, thank you, Commissioner Landon. A potential conflict of interest. I own residential property in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill.
I own property in Springfield, so have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck.
To potential conflicts of interest, I own property, residential property in Springfield, and I write personal and commercial insurance in Springfield.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar.
I also have two potential conflicts of interest, the first being that I own residential property in Springfield, and the second that I work for a real estate developer that operates in Springfield.
Thank you very much. I also have a potential conflict of interest in that I own property in Springfield. At this time, we will turn the time over to Planning Staff Mark Rust for staff presentation on the development code.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Mark Rust. Also here tonight is Arva Hussain. She may be helping present some of the information tonight. So I do like to go ahead and just reiterate some of the project purpose and objectives, just for if people are viewing the recording of this meeting later, it can provide a little bit of a high lever, high level overview. So hopefully you can see my screen. Again, so tonight we're talking about the development code update project. We've been working through a number of work sessions throughout the summer. So the purpose, the, the purpose statement for the overall project was incorporated in the community engagement plan that was approved by this body, the Planning Commission acting in your capacity as the city, the Committee for Citizen Involvement. So I'm not going to read this, but you'll see the purpose statement there. Also included in that community engagement plan are the overall objectives for the project. Those are listed there on the screen. And then a high level overview of the project timeline and where we're at currently. Again, I reiterate this every time, but just for the sake of the recording, the yellow bars represent phase one or the residential housing phase of the code update project. And then the orange bars represent phase two of the project, the employment lands phase. We are, this red line represents we're moving into these steps. This is the formal adoption process step. So we are working, this work session tonight is anticipated to be potentially the final work session with the Planning Commission prior to the public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on January 4th, just after the first of the year. So then we'll proceed down this adoption process timeline with deliberations and a final recommendation from the Planning Commission to the city council and then move towards a final adoption process at the city council level. So that's again, just a high level overview that I'd like to share. Tonight in your packet are a couple of attachments. I've included a briefing memorandum that goes over a couple of topics, including the, just some follow up on the discussion we had at the last planning commission meeting. The first one being occupancy of residential dwellings. And we'll talk more about that. A second topic that's included more discussion and background on the discussion we had at the last work session around short term rentals. So excuse me, so staff has provided some recommendations and suggestions for consideration and discussion tonight that we can get right into. There are a couple other topics. If you've looked at the packet, there's hundreds of pages of code draft code text sections that you'll see. We're not going to go through all of that at all tonight, page by page, but I think it is all on the table for consideration and comment suggestions. What we are working towards is finalizing these drafts into what will be the public hearing draft that will go out for public notice and that will be the drafts that will be in front of the Planning Commission for the public hearing process. So with that, unless there's any questions at the start here, I'm going to just dive into the communication memo and talk about the first topic of occupancy. So not seeing any hands. Let's just get into that. I'm going to click on a few things here really quick. Hopefully get my screens in the right spot. So the, the topic of occupancy came up in regard to some new state legislation around the definition of family and not regulating based on family status or not family status in terms of number of people per dwelling. We had thrown out the idea, there is a definition in, from the Oregon Fair Housing Council for occupancy that was discussed last time. The general feedback I got from the Planning Commission at the last work session that it didn't seem appropriate to regulate by that definition. And so we discussed looking at the building code for how the building code may regulate occupancy. So the follow up from discussions with our building official and looking at the building code is essentially from my standpoint or from kind of a not being completely versed in the building code, but from my kind of layman's standpoint of the building code understanding is for the most part, the building code doesn't regulate occupancy limits by number of people or anything like that. The only remotely type of maximum occupancy that the building code would get into would be around what the design load for the structure is. So if like the floor system of a house is only designed to hold, I don't know, 10,000 pounds or some number of weight. And then you packed so many people into a house that it exceeded that weight threshold. That would kind of be where the building code would come into play a little bit, but for the most part, there's, there's no enforcement mechanism around occupancy with the building code. So with that input, I'm happy to talk more about it. Our suggestion is based on kind of the feedback we received at the last work session is to propose to not regulate occupancy in the development code. And really then not regulated by the building code either, because it really doesn't serve that function. So with that, I see Commissioner Cravilas hand up, but I'll defer to Chair Landon.
Commissioner Quavilla.
Quick question, Mark. Occupancy, police and fire are, would be involved in key decisions in regard to number of occupants due to safety of ingress and egress and emergency evacuations, wouldn't they?
You know, I, I didn't explore that specifically. I did ask our building official about the fire code. And his indication was he didn't think the fire code really regulated it either. I do see Assistant City Attorney Christina Krass pop up, so she may have some thoughts on that question as well.
Did a preliminary review. I listened in on the planning commissions' last work session, even though I wasn't in attendance. I watched the video. So I did a little bit of review and it looks like for single units and duplexes, they don't have those types of regulations, but they do of course for larger type of occupancies. So they do on transient accommodations and, and those types of things, but they're generally not regulated in the building codes for those smaller, single units or duplexes.
And if I may just add to that too, that's a good distinction. And the building official did differentiate between anything that fell under the one and two family building code is distinctly different from anything that would fall under the commercial building code. And I think, and Christina can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I can't remember if fourplexes kick it into under the commercial code versus the one and two family residential code. I could double check on that piece, but once you are into say, an apartment building, something over what's covered by the one and two family residential code, it kicks it into the commercial code when then a lot more things would come into play, like the ingress egress type of things.
And there are different standards between the codes. So I think the focus and the one and two dwelling code, and I don't know off the top of my head where fourplexes fit into that, but the, you know, the, the building standards around one single and double unit buildings are designed to provide more points of egress are, you know, in the building. So, you know, bedrooms have a window that can be used as an egress, for example, and there are just different different types of rules that apply to the commercial which are based more around the number of people that can be there.
I'm sort of raising my hand because I'm not sure how to do that, but have we had, do we have other cities that have done the same sort of thing where, you know, they just haven't worried about the occupancy and it's worked out just fine?
That I haven't done, or I don't think any of the staff has done that specific research. I think because this new legis, the legislation requiring us not to regulate by family status is new. Probably a lot of cities are figuring out how to, you know, address this topic. So we, you know, it may be that we could reach out to League of Oregon Cities or some other comparable jurisdictions and see what others are doing. Um, I know the Chair of the Planning Commission, Commissioner McGinnley made a comment and she happens to be planning staff at the city of Eugene and through her comments at the last work session and my discussions with her, Eugene is relying on the building code. They're not going to attempt to regulate occupancy through their development code any longer as well. That's their path for implementing the new legislation. So that's a similar path that we're recommending.
Good, thank you.
So without any other hands or questions, I see. So that's how we'll move forward into the public hearing draft of the code. And I'll move on to the topic of short term rentals. And Arva here is done quite a bit of the research behind the short term rentals. So I might ask her to elaborate on some of these points. I'm not going to go into details about a lot of the, what's written in the memo unless there's specific questions on it. But we did try and lay out, we did do, Arva did some great comparable analysis from other jurisdictions around the state and how short term rentals are handled. We did try and separate out, there's a difference between how they may be handled administratively. Some of the discussion at the last work session got into the topic of transit room tax business, or may have, you know, questions around business licensing and, and things related to how the administration of short term rentals is handled is outside of the realm of the development code. So really we tried to focus our analysis on how other jurisdictions and how we may look at the provisions for the development code in respect to short term rentals. Again, as I had discussed previously, and as we talked about in the memo, we do currently in our existing development code, regulate bed and breakfast facilities. It's one type of short term rental. We also regulate rooming house, which again is another type. So we really kind of built our recommendation in the memo for your consideration tonight off of what our existing regulations are, and then just tried to broaden them out to be applicable to basically any kind of short term rental. So that's a really high level review. And I, what I do in the memo is I refer, I don't include the specific regulations, but I refer to the code section. And I'm happy to bring that up for us to look at tonight, if that's helpful. So let me find the right spot on my page here, if you can bear with me. Any questions based on what I've already said in relation to short term rentals? And Arva, is there anything you want to add to the discussion at this point about in regard to the analysis you did and your evaluation of some of that?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, hi, man. So yeah, one of the thing that we need to keep in mind is that every although I've compared and looked at different Oregon cities and counties, we have to keep in mind that every local jurisdiction is different. So like a tourist community would be different than a bedroom community or a large city requirements would be different than a medium city requirement. So, so something to think about when we talk about these regulations that how, how we can best you know, customize or I choose these regulations because not one size fits all. So yeah, that's something to keep in mind.
Yeah, that's a great point, Arva. Thank you. And, and she points out that there are a number of cities that are more tourist focused types of cities that deal with the short term rental dynamic a lot more intensely than we may in Springfield. Some cities along the coast, for instance, or maybe Hood River, cities like Bend, those types of cities. Obviously probably have a higher demand for short term rentals than we will. I want to be cognizant of not trying to solve for a problem that we don't really have, but at the same time balancing that with, you know, recognizing that there are potential impacts from these types of uses. So I have found the code section. So I'm going to share my screen again. Hopefully this isn't too small of print for you to all be able to see. Let's see how this works. And I can make this a little bit larger too. Are you? Are you seeing that, that short term rental language on the screen there?
Yes.
Great. So what we are proposing is essentially to deal with kind of the, some of the dynamic we talked about last time where there's some concern about the uses of short term rental where it's a house that somebody lives in and may rent one of the bedrooms out of their house for weekends at a time per year, something like that. Versus where there's just a vacant house where it's just purely a short term rental all the time that's rented for weekend, the whole house is rented essentially. The other thing we tried to anticipate is kind of along the lines of what new middle housing coming on board with duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, if people are putting essentially like a second dwelling in their backyard and then living in the main house. Does the, the second dwelling effectively become a short term rental that people are living in? Maybe the owners are living in one dwelling and renting the dwelling. So with that, we've proposed two different types here. One to kind of anticipate an owner occupied or operator occupied. And then the type two would be more along the lines of just a complete house being vacant, not lived in otherwise and being rented. So again, I see Commissioner Cravilas hand up.
Commissioner, well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Landon. Yes, excellent work, Arva. That was really nice to see that comparison from city to city and also appreciate Mark's work in putting together the, the combined two phase descriptions of the short term rental. I did notice under the description, it says owner or operated. And I think you want to say owner or operator. But again, great work. Thanks.
Commissioner Salazar, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Landon. Yeah, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Quavilla's points. Firstly, thank you for that research, Arva. It's really helpful to see what other jurisdictions are doing. I think that was really helpful. And secondly, yeah, again, also I think this, this recommendation from staff, especially from Mark in delineating short term rentals in this way, and these two types is really helpful, especially for this process. And I understand that that necessarily putting regulate, that putting regulations on short term rentals isn't necessarily part of this process in terms of the development code, but I think for us as a body, I think it would help be helpful for us in the future to keep our hand, our fingers on the pulse of if short term rentals are impacting the long-term rental housing market in any way, shape or form in our community. And I do think that this way of delineating short term rentals in the code will maybe help us down the line, keep track of how many short term rentals are in the community. So we can see if that has a meaningful impact on long-term rentals as well. So thank you.
Commissioner Gill.
Commissioner Landon. Commissioner Salazar kind of summed up what I wanted to say. I, I will just say out loud, I, I am I am uneasy about having housing stock permanently used for short term rental in the state of the housing situation in our community. I also think that long-term has real impacts on the neighborhoods and the communities having that level of turnover of people. But I do hear that it is not as big an issue here as it is in other communities. So I think I'm okay with the keeping our finger on the pulse. I did want to bring up though. And I don't know if this is really a thing, but I wonder if, if there's ever a moment when an owner of a long-term rental property, it wouldn't happen now, but like in a time where there isn't such demand for property that they might have a six month period or something between renters that they could do some short term rental and what that might look like. If we're keeping the type two, then I guess it doesn't really matter, but if we ended up only having the type one where it needed to be owner occupied, perhaps there could be language there for long-term rentals that don't have any occupants for a short period of time. Cause that did seem like a good, nice stopgap for people. There was a time in the world where it could be hard to get a renter in your space. So so it might not be the case now, but I thought of that as I was, as I was reading this. Thank you.
Yeah, all, all great points. I, I switched the code sections here too, to share. And I've forgot that I wanted to share this initially, but so we, this is section 3.2.200, the residential district use table. Sorry, I don't have like a PDF page number of the code section, but it is page three of 41 of attachment two. If that's helpful. And I apologize too. I didn't mean for these copies to come out so messy. I was in a rush to get these prepared for the packet for the meeting and failed to address a lot of the comments and deletions and track changes that showed up pretty messily in a lot of these code sections. So my apologies for that. And so a lot of this doesn't read very well. But what I wanted to point out, so here we list type one and type two, short term rentals in the residential districts. These three columns represent, I'll just scroll to the top, the R1, R2, and R3 districts. So another way, what we are also proposing, and we're open to suggestions or conversations about this, but that the type twos where the entire house is used as a short term rental, we're proposing that it would be as a discretionary use. So they would actually have to go through a land use approval process to get approval to use the entire house as a short term rental versus the type one where they're just proposing to say rent a room or two or part of the house. That would be an outright permitted use, subject to the same set of standards that we were just looking at a moment ago. And the asterisk in this case is just indicating that it's subject to those standards. That's in this footnote down here in conformance with cited code sections. We're going to get into this in a few minutes as well. But there were some structural changes based on some of the comments from the previous work sessions where we were had special standards in that other section we were just looking at. I'm, I'm working with, you know, changing the, the, the words here from special use standards. And then like at the top of this column where it says, instead of saying special use standards, something along the lines of applicable code standard. So anyway, we can talk more about that in a minute, but just kind of pointing it out here. So again.
Mark, real quick, it sounds like we're talking about something that we're supposed to have been looking at and whatever that was never came up. So.
Yeah, my apologies with the failing to point out the three point. I'm looking at the memo and I definitely do reference the SDC 47355. I see I didn't specifically refer to the 3.2.200 section for this dynamic that I'm talking about now about discretionary use for type two. So open to talking about it more here, explaining it or hearing your thoughts.
I think it might help if you shared your screen when you're on the code so we could, they can see that.
Am I not sure? I thought I was.
I think that's what, I think that's what.
That's what I was saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Geez. Here I thought I was the whole time. My apologies.
Beautiful smile though. I mean, you look great.
I don't want you to be looking at me for two hours. So now can you see this code section? Sorry about that. Thanks for pointing that out. So here, this is 3.2.200. Type one and type two. And again, this is really messy. So these Ds are representing discretionary use permit requirement. And I was talking about the columns here. Sorry, I was scrolling, thinking you were all seeing what I was doing. R1, R2, R3. I changed the heading of this as I was referencing to applicable code standards. And then I had scrolled to the bottom of this, just showing kind of the footnotes here. P equals permitted, the D equals discretionary use. The asterisk means that it's permitted as long as in conformance with the cited code standards. So that's a recap briefly, hopefully of what I was meaning to be showing there. So anyway, with that.
I think that helps. Do you have time for a question from Commissioner Salazar?
Definitely.
Commissioner Salazar, please.
Yeah, not a question. Just, yeah, I think that's a great way to to delineate that type two as a discretionary use because as I said, I think it would be helpful for us in the future to know how many people are applying for this type of use. So I really applaud that. I think that's a great, great way of delineating that. Thanks, Mark.
Great. No problem. And again, kind of another, I've, I've mentioned this before in broad terms for middle housing and just approach wise for the code in general, but it's easier to pull back later than to institute more regulations later. So in this case, and actually I was just having a discussion with Christina Krass earlier today about what changes in the code trigger a measure 56 notice. And we're working on that now, but this may be one for us to flag and think about later, Christina. Just off the top of my head here, whether or not, you know, we're changing lots of things and how we categorize things. Whether or not, you know, we're changing lots of things and how we categorize things and what we call things. If we're broadening the term, short-term rental, how do we allow that today versus are we putting more restrictions on uses actually now? And so anyway, something to think about. We, but again, that, that broad concept of if requiring discretionary use now is a little bit more restrictive, it'd be easier in the future to pull back and say, okay, now that they could be outright permitted versus if we allowed them as outright permitted now and then wanted to have discretionary use later, that would be implementing more onerous standards that may trigger measure fifty-six later. So similarly with type one, if we want them to be outright permitted now, trying to make those discretionary later would be a little bit more difficult. So, but I'm not sure we want to go there at this point. I haven't heard that. So. With that, not seeing other hands. I think we can move towards a couple of other topics. I was going to go away from short-term rentals now unless there were any other thoughts or comments or questions. What I do want to move to, so Commissioner Gill has brought up the suggestion, I think it was a great suggestion and have finally made the change, hopefully somewhat adequately, but the, the standards, and I think I'm still sharing my screen. Sorry. Okay. So I'm gonna, hopefully this doesn't make you all too dizzy or anything. I'm gonna. So for middle housing, the suggestion was to not defer to the special use standards or special standards for certain uses, but rather incorporate these standards for the middle housing types into this residential section of the code. So that's what I've attempted to do and it's, it's gotten a little messy. And unfortunately I can't easily turn off track changes, I think, in this version that I'm sharing. But what I, these, all these different numbers here represent is I'm, I'm deleting out the old reference to the other section, the special standard section of four point seven. And instead referring to this same section in three point two to the standards below. So I'll just go down to that now. And it's, we haven't changed anything otherwise with the standards. But after we did this, it highlighted some questions that I think would, we could talk about tonight and get some input on. So here's where now all these standards are included. They're included in the residential section. So it doesn't feel like, oh, these are special standards and you must go to this other special standard section. And again, we're, I think, proposing to rename that section instead of calling it special standards, just referring to it as standards for certain uses. But I'm just in, in the broad view of trying to be more inclusive of all the different types of uses. Some of this goes back to the dynamic too of the, some of the initial city council direction was, there's a balancing act between having everything kind of in one place. So you're not having to flip back and forth between sections, but also not kind of creating too much text in one place or making, it's an ease of use kind of issue. So anyway, again, we didn't modify any of the standards. We basically just deleted them out of the other section and included them here. But I think one of the things I'm hoping to get a little feedback on is, so now it almost feels some of these sections are duplicative of some of the requirements above. And so for instance, for a sing, just for a standard, single unit dwelling or single-family home, there is no reference to any standards. However, it is subject to setback standards and height standards and lot coverage standards down below. And here's lot area dimensions and lot sizes. And then these, all these kind of standard requirements of setbacks. Here's, here's one that's kind of deals with special setbacks where townhomes is built in. So the question really is when some of these sections specific to the middle housing types now, height is one where we could probably consolidate. So there's a specific height regulation, for instance, now, if we scroll down to one of the middle housing type sections, one of them includes height. So does it make more sense to have the the height standard, and I'm trying to find it here really quick. I forget which exact middle housing type it's under. But the height standards, say for townhomes, or maybe it's cottage clusters. I think cottage clusters is limited. And this is, again, it, it, it's a dynamic that's set up by how the rules from the state were approved for how we can regulate middle housing types. So for instance, here's lot size and dimension standards within cottage clusters. So instead of repeating a section for lot size and dimensions specific to cottage clusters here, should we really cut and paste this section out and put it under the other lot dimension and size standards? A general section and, and specify that these ones are specific to cottage clusters. Same thing with, I think, height. Here's some setbacks. So specific setbacks for cottage clusters, again, the height one. So some of the trade-off is in my mind, if you want to do a cottage cluster housing development, here's all your standards specific to that housing type versus having to go back up to the top and sort through the, the lot standard section and the heights standard and pick out all the provisions that are applicable to cottage cluster. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. I, I hopefully kind of made a point with the example I'm trying to use and looking for your feedback or thoughts or comments on that dynamic. And, and I'll just throw out too, this could be something where we proposed it one way for the public hearing. You have more time to think about it. And then through the public hearing process, we revise some of the formatting. These aren't critical pieces of we're changing the standards, just where they're located. Anyway, it doesn't have to be a definite decision tonight. So with that, I see Commissioner Gill's.
Thank you. Um, thank, thanks for those changes. I, I do think it's meaningful. And of course it does trigger other questions. So it's a really interesting to think about that. I wonder, I think it does make sense to keep it with the type because most of the time people kind of know, like if I own a property, I kind of know what I'm trying to, what I'm doing with it. But if I'm a housing developer and I want to be like, well, what are my options for the number I have this property and what are my options? Like I want to get the most units out of it, or I want to get different styles out of it. So I wonder if the, if it could be, and I know we're supposed to keep it short, but I find useful better than short. So I wonder if there's like a chart situation where the lot size, height and whatnot can be in a chart for the different types. And, and then when you go to the type, it has the details for the type as it is here. That's one thing that comes to mind.
Yeah, I'll just say I definitely like the concept of a table or a chart. We've done that with some of the other standards. So I think that's something we could easily build. And then so even in like the section above, have this table and then refer to the section below still from the table. And I think we do that in other situations. So that's a great suggestion. I think we could pretty easily try and build that in.
Definitely inclined to agree on that one. If I could put my vote in for that one too. I'm not seeing any other hands that this Commissioner Salazar.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I also agree with Commissioners Gill and Landon. I think it makes sense to keep, keep things together. As Commissioner Gill said, most developers are, especially if we're trying to make this more useful for the average, not just a developer, but the average person who just wants to, to develop their lot that they have or build an ADU, they kind of know what they're wanting to do already. But I think, yeah, a, a table or chart would be helpful in, in general for getting, getting a sense of what could happen on a, on a site.
Great. All good feedback. Okay. Let's see, there are other topics. And if there's topics that the commissioners want to point out or talk about tonight, I think now's a good time. We could jump in because I could jump to a couple of other things that aren't quite as pressing. But definitely there's some other things we could talk about. I don't want to take up all the time and not give the commissioners an opportunity to raise anything that they have questions or comments on in general, over any of the code sections. It could be dating back to any of the employment land code sections, procedure stuff. I will just say for the benefit of Commissioner Cravila, we have been continuing to work on incorporating all your previous rounds of comments. I know, Arva, I've asked her to build all your comments into these draft code sections. And then we'll, as we're finalizing the public hearings drafts, be working to resolve or address any and all of those comments or questions. There may be things that you'll want to bring back up through the public hearings process for sure. But again, anyway, just so you know, we are working on that actively still.
Commissioner Quivilla.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mark. Have a couple of other things I'd like to bring up just directly. I was noticing there's a big list of areas where there were deletions. And I was wondering if those were significant or if that could be shown legislatively. I think that was on page forty-seven of our package, which I can get the, let's see, I can get where exactly where it was. It was attachment to page forty-three, just a big, big list of deletions. The other thing, couple of other things I'd like to bring up. I talked about garage setbacks and alleys before. And I think I was misinterpreted on that to say six foot. I was actually thinking of a six-inch setback or a zero-inch setback. I think that's kind of the standard through like the historic district where we see the alleys or, or the garages are buttered right up against the alleys. And other than maintenance issues for like rehabilitation of utilities in there, I think that, that zero setback has seemed to work very nicely in a lot of areas. So I'm wondering why we, that's something we might want to keep. Another concern, it's on page seventy of our, which is attachment three, page twenty-one regarding the no common open space for a quarter of a mile to a park. So we can delete the open space requirements in a lot if there's a quarter of a mile to a park. When there's a quarter of a mile and it traverses a number of multiple properties, that maintenance of that ADA access is on all of those different property owners. Because property owners are responsible in the city are responsible for maintaining their own sidewalks. So really you're saying that you're kind of allowing an exemption that's based on the behaviors of a whole bunch of different people. And that strikes me as a little odd. The other thing that strikes me about odd about that is that a quarter of a mile may be quite a bit too far for anybody who's less than ambulatory. And I, I think in a way that might be looked upon as ADA discriminatory. If there's someone who can't traverse a quarter of a mile, even if it is ADA accessible, say someone who's you know, has a degenerative disease or something. Then to me, they, they're, they should have the option for open space as well. So that's just a comment on that. Another thing, I'm trying to, gonna get the code for it again, attachment three, page one of thirty-six. The minimum mobile home lot size at two thousand square feet. I've seen a lot of really well-designed, small, and I mean very small mobile homes. You know, down into the size of fifteen by, you know, ten. And even, and even, you know, there are a lot of mini mobile homes out there that are really well-designed. So I'm wondering if two thousand square foot for a lot size, why can't we have it smaller for that type of development? Another one on page sixteen of our attachment, which is, let's see, attachment to page eleven of forty-four. It says that townhomes are not allowed on panhandle lots. And this is another one that I think that there might be an instance where we could develop more housing if we would allow that in the same fashion that I was wondering why we call out for no mixed use in a single-story structure. So it's, I, my mind goes, why not? Why can't we, why can't we do those? So that was another list of, of questions and, and issues I found.
Yeah, and all great comments for sure, Commissioner Cravila. Thank you for those. I can just touch on a couple of those briefly if it's helpful tonight, and then we can incorporate those comments still. So I'll just start with the last one. Townhomes not allowed on panhandle lots. So that's a specific provision out of the middle housing rules for allowing townhomes. So that is an allowance in the administrative rules for the minimum standards for how to implement middle housing. So that is included in the state regulations. So it doesn't mean we have to do that. It basically that we can do that. So that's a, a valid question of, well, well, should we do that? I think some of the dynamic with that is how that would happen if you have panhandle lots and are trying to develop townhomes. But it's something, I, I remember being on the Rules Advisory Committee when those rules were being written at the state level. And there was some concern expressed from members of the advisory committee on the difficulty with doing townhomes on panhandle lots could be more cumbersome and infrastructure impacts and things like that from that. But it's, it's something that's optional for us to include. I, I referenced the Oregon administrative rule and a comment there associated with that. So that's why that's there. It doesn't mean that we need to include it, but that's where that came from. The manufactured home comment is also, you know, important to consider. I think some of these fall into the realm of being policy neutral. I'll kind of categorize it under, under that umbrella a little bit as direction from the city council. So similar to how I think it was Commissioner Salazar a little while ago in respect to short-term rentals, talked about, you know, short-term rentals, developing code for that could almost become its own project within this project. So it's like, how many different changes do we make? And every change we make has potential repercussions. But it, it doesn't mean we have to leave everything the same because we're definitely not. So this is an opportunity to reconsider some of those things. So you know, with manufactured dwelling parks being re-envisioned probably from what they were in the sixties and seventies kind of thing, I think it's a, a valid comment and time and opportunity to consider whether that does make sense. We actually have, some of you are probably aware, but if not, there, there is state funding that has been allocated to the city of Springfield for developing a new manufactured home park. And some of our staff is actively working on that. So it may be an interest in helping provide more housing in a, in a more reasonable way to have a smaller manufactured home space. So I think that's something we can definitely look at. It may be, I don't want it to escalate again into kind of its own project within the projects, like how much research do we do? Maybe I ask Arva, we actually have another, I don't know if all of you or some of you were introduced to a former PSU fellow we had working with us as well. She was helping Sandy on some of the floodplain code regulations that I think came before this body. Katie Carroll, she was a PSU fellow. She's actually been hired back on to help us as a part-time temporary employee with the city. So she's also going to be re-engaging with this project. So anyway, there's a little capacity to help do some of this kind of digging into how other jurisdictions are looking at state regulations around manufactured dwelling park, space size and things like that. And then the last one I'll touch on, I think I covered most of the ones you've mentioned, just the open space requirement. That is specific to multi-unit residential development. So like apartment complexes and things. So that was a, there's a couple of different options of how to develop. there's a couple of different options of how to develop the multi-unit developments. And so that was one provision. I think the idea is without reading it in detail tonight and getting into it, but one of the concepts is we heard some of the feedback from our technical advisor committee when we were looking at this is our current standards for multi-unit housing is pretty much geared towards your garden-style apartments. And as Springfield grows, there's likely to be, and there is a push even from the state level to allow more urban types of development. And I think there's a desire to have, and you see some of it in Eugene and other cities, but multi-unit housing that's, you know, five stories that takes up the entire property. And there's no landscaping on the site at all. So I think part of that option, the contemplation for that was in relation to that is anticipating some different styles of multi-unit housing. I see Sandy's hand pop up too. She may have some thoughts on this.
Yeah, and as I recall, and I may be not remembering or not thinking correctly, but as I recall, part of this was Commissioner Cravila, you had said it's that ADA access is dependent on other property owners in between. But I think part of this, the reason for this provision is that if developer of apartments wants to be able to not provide that open space, but could actually invest, it's still public right-of-way, they could make those ADA improvements to connect between their apartment and that park, which would benefit not just their residents, but the neighborhood. Because one of the real challenges in Springfield is to get all of our streets and sidewalks ADA compliant. And it's very expensive to do all those ADA ramps. So that could be one way that they could contribute to the public and therefore be able to reduce their development costs on site by providing that ADA accessibility.
Yeah, great, great comments, Sandy. Thank you, Commissioner Cravila.
Yeah, great, great point. That would that would definitely be a benefit both to the joiners whose properties wouldn't be ADA accessible and then also for the neighborhood entirely. But I'd also recommend not completely getting rid of green space either because there's urban heat sink and there's a lot of other things to consider to have open space be a requirement in in all developments. But that's again, my opinion.
So if I if I may, Commissioner Cravila, just ask a question in response. So would you envision as, I think, is it the Royal Building downtown Springfield? I can't recall. It's maybe four or five stories. But would you envision a type of multifamily housing that was urban and didn't have any landscaping on the property at all, where it was kind of a mid-rise apartment building, for instance?
Yes, assuredly, but I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking about some of the developments that are, you know, not downtown area type. I mean, that's that's a sort of a special case for that type of that type of development. But I'm thinking about more of your your standard apartment complexes. So good question.
Great. Thanks for that response. I appreciate it. Okay. Another topic I could touch on, and again, Commissioner Cravila's had some thoughts about this. And Christina Krass has provided some feedback on the topic of solar setbacks and solar standards. So the way I've drafted the code, the public comment draft, and how we've proceeded to incorporate the code for the public hearing draft is to not include the existing solar setback standards. Primarily, what where that came from was in the original code audit. The solar standards were identified as a barrier to development. There's some significant setback requirements. Our code, our current code also has some orientation standards for residential development. So when a new subdivision goes in, if lots are oriented on an east-west street versus a north-south running street, though lot widths and frontage requirements are different. We've done away with all of that. So it's more of a one-size-fits-all. I think those types of regulations I've seen, you know, in doing research of other jurisdictions, that's kind of an antiquated way of looking at residential development, but it is related to solar access. So depending on if your lots are oriented north-south or east-west, having a wider lot provides a little bit more opportunity for that solar access. The solar setback standards are different from that dynamic that I just described, but they're related. The solar setback standards are notoriously very difficult to implement and can have pretty significant impacts on development. Requiring some pretty significant setbacks in cases where then it forces development to potentially not meet density standards and things like that. So again, the the DLCD-funded grant that we had to provide a consultant to do that initial code audit identified that as a provision that was recommended to be removed. And then running that recommendation from the code audit report through the technical advisor committee. It was also agreed by the technical advisory committee to not include the our existing solar standards and to propose to remove them. So with that, there are multiple layers. There's a couple of different things that come into play with solar setback standards. And so although we're proposing to remove the the those base solar development standards, we do have a provision in our code to apply for, and I don't know if I'll get the terminology a hundred percent correct, but I think it's like a solar access permit. Where if somebody wants to install a a solar system on their house and wants to ensure that their neighbor doesn't build some big tall building next to them or have trees that grow up and then shade that solar system that they invested in to install, that they can apply to the city for a a permit for us to approve a solar access permit that essentially puts an easement on that neighboring property to prevent that neighboring property from shading their their solar system. There's some specifics about that. The solar system has to be active. You know, once the solar system's no longer active for a year, then that kind of restriction on the neighbor's property goes away, things like that. And then, and Christina Krass may be able to touch on this more. But there's a third provision I wasn't aware of until Christina did some work evaluating state law on this. But there's appears to be another provision in state law. Christina, did you want to kind of highlight that?
Yeah, so the state law allows private property owners to enter into agreements for solar access. So when, for example, if someone is doing a subdivision and as part of their, you know, they're a developer builder and they plan to have solar panels for all the homes they build, they can, at the time they're doing a land division, record solar access easements on each of those lots to ensure that nothing is constructed that obstructs those solar systems, you know, into the future. And that is recorded as an easement. Or, you know, private property owners, you know, if I want to put in a solar panel and I don't want my neighbor to put something up later that blocks access for that solar system or otherwise really value my view economically, I can just, you know, bargain in the same way people buy and sell property interests to obtain an easement by mutual agreement with some form of compensation or consideration to the, you know, to my neighbor for that benefit. And those are not based on the city's standards because they're just sort of private market transactions that can occur under state law. And I will say that the city's restriction does only apply to vegetation. It does not apply currently to buildings. Although if it was important to have an ability for someone to prevent their neighbor from putting a building in that area, we could change that application process, for example.
I think some other parts of the discussion get into if if there's existing platted subdivisions, say, or just developed property that have recorded covenants and restrictions on them. Those private covenant and restrictions can put in place solar setback standards, things of that nature in a development. The other part is a question about if there's existing platted lots that don't have any CCNRs, but were plotted under a time now when we do have solar setback regulations, but the lots remain vacant. Would the solar setbacks apply later if we've removed them to the lots that were plotted at the time that there were setback, solar setback standards? And I think the answer is no. It's it's similar to what we're talking about with all of these revised development regulations that like with middle housing, if a single-family home lot was plotted two years ago and has sat vacant, and then once new middle housing is allowed, they could build a duplex on that lot. They'll be allowed to build the duplex. They won't be restricted to what code was in place when that lot was plotted. So similarly with a solar setback standard that unless there was some private restriction put on that lot, whatever regulation was in place when the lot was plotted would not continue to be in place just based on the plat date. So anyway, just wanted to raise that topic a little bit and see if there's any additional discussion or input from the commission on it prior to just proceeding at the public hearing. It's it's hard to, for me, it's, you know, it's any one little topic could come up as a big issue at the at the public hearing. It's hard to anticipate what all topics. We've talked about a lot of the bigger ones we envisioned that could be, you know, bigger topics for conversations. I don't pretend to think that we can think of them all. Commissioner Salazar, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, I think just as an initial thought on the solar, I guess, application and and the the implications of of solar easements. And as Christina mentioned, I think yeah, it sounds like the the easements would cover trees, vegetation, but not building. And I think I I would be I I think I would be hesitant to extend such easements to buildings. Because as much as I love solar energy, I also don't want to kneecap our ability to to grow taller and for buildings to grow higher and don't want to see it. I mean, it'd be great to see a future in which everybody has solar on their roof, but I also don't want that to inhibit our ability to to build taller buildings and get denser over time.
So just want to clarify, I think some information that might or context that might be helpful. The current, so the current solar setbacks are the part of, I mean, that's restricted everywhere. So the separate easement process is really a restriction. But the separate process the city has probably didn't incorporate buildings into what was restricted because buildings were captured citywide and prevented citywide. So an option the commission could have, which I think you're saying you would, I think your comment was saying you wouldn't favor this option. But the city could decide to repeal the broadly applicable solar setbacks that apply to every property, regardless of whether they're using solar or not. And you could just repeal those everywhere, regardless of whether someone's using solar, or you could repeal them from applying more broadly, but keep them as they apply to someone who comes in and specifically requests protection for a solar system that they're continuously operating. And that could, that would be a potentially middle pathway between no solar setback standards at all versus this, the solar setback standards we have that apply regardless of whether someone uses solar panels. You could, you could have, you could add the building part back into those restrictions so that if somebody comes in and there are not buildings there and they have a solar energy system that meets the criteria for that application, then they could get that protection. There are limits on the types of properties that it applies to. It would not extend to properties that are capable of casting shadows additionally. So I just provide a little bit better explanation than I did the first time around, maybe about how that works related to buildings.
Thanks, Christina. That's helpful. And I do think that that middle pathway may be the most the one I would I would favor the most of this time. I think I'd need to think about it more, too.
I think there's some consideration too for a lot of the state mandated regulations that we're you know, having to implement and that will likely be forthcoming to the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Act is really pushing for more dense development and taller buildings. I think it's going to likely be specific to downtowns and more kind of urban centers within cities, so not necessarily dispersed throughout neighborhoods and that type of thing. So we can take a look at this kind of hybrid approach, I think, of, you know, like Christina explained, repealing the broadly applicable solar setbacks everywhere regardless and and building that in kind of morphing it into this other dynamic that we have and see how that comes out. Well, I don't, I don't want to promise that we'll have something completely worked out by the time the public hearing draft has to go out, but it could definitely be a topic for further discussion after the commissions contemplated the thoughts and ideas and heard from the public on it more as we as you all deliberate in the public hearing process. Commissioner Landon, you're you're the chair, you're around the meat. I don't want to have to call on you, but so feel free to jump in.
Well, I was going to ask you, how many people are really putting up, you know, standing solar panels as opposed to just putting panels on the roof? You know, is it, are we looking to solve a problem that's not a problem?
All right. Great point. You know, and I'll just say between Christina and I, we put our heads together and I think Christina did a little digging, but neither her or I could come up with any examples where this, the solar easement provision in our code that anybody has ever applied for that or that we've ever granted one throughout the history that we're aware of dating back to nineteen eighty-seven, at least when this code was most recently updated. So we're not aware of any of those easements that exist to where people wanted to actually apply to protect their solar standards. So.
We appreciate that. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. Just to kind of chime in on the the solar piece. There's a number of, there's a number of layers that 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 create challenges to people really embracing the so solar technology, not that I don't love it, not that it's not a great idea and things like that. And and so I think that maybe when you're looking back to see, you know, who's applied for what, I wouldn't expect you to find a whole lot of that because there's, there's a lot of barrier, there have been a lot of barriers. Those are removed, have been removed to some degree over the last few years. But there was a time when most standard insurance companies didn't want people to have solar on their roofs and things like that. And so the technology has definitely been, has definitely improved and standards have definitely changed, but it's been harder and harder. It's in the past, it had been harder to kind of fit through all those regulations and those kinds of things. So there may it may have been some context for that, is all I'm saying. I I know that now, and like I said, I just know this from what I what I do. I know it's not a big deal now, but five years ago, I only had a few places that would accept solar panels on their roofs to for to place clients. Now that's not an issue. So regulations have changed a great deal. And so I you know, and then to Commissioner Landon's point, I don't know that it's, we're not trying to, I don't know that it's, we're trying to solve a problem that's that's not really there. I think it's good to anticipate some of that coming down the, coming down because like I said, you know, the technology is changing so fast and and the infrastructure that goes with it and how those things are put together. Roofs are a great way to about solar panels, but there's also a lot of other ways to do it that are equally effective. So I think that what we're going to find is this is going to continue to to develop. And I don't know that it's not. And I know it's a bad idea to consider that. Just make two cents on it.
Yeah, I just, it's it's great comments for sure. I just, I think I heard on the radio this morning or yesterday morning that energy costs, at least in Eugene, are going up this next year, three to four percent, I think, for electricity, but that natural gas prices in Lane County are going up something like thirty percent. So anyway, energy policy is all obviously So anyway, energy policy is obviously always shifting and. Just from a personal note standpoint, when I lived in central Oregon, I was in the middle of the desert and. Had a two-story house with great southern roof exposure and had our house analyzed to put solar on it, trying to use the tax credits and things and. There was one juniper tree that just cast just enough shade at the right time of day to not allow us to qualify for that. Tax credit unless we cut that tree down kind of thing. And. And even then it was like, well, you have to make show that you have a brand new roof or a new roof within a couple of years and. There were concerns about the more holes you put in your roof, you know, you open up to leaks. And anyway, it is, it was more involved than I ever. I thought we can just slap some solar panels up on here and will be great because, you know, we have all this sun access. But anyway.
Yeah, it's 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 as you start going down that road. You find that there's a lot to it. I suspect that you're going to see as the. Is the ability to have kind of freestanding. Solar panels continues to develop. I suspect that you're going to see people look at that as an attractive option. Again, there's still some logistical issues with it, but I just know that the layers of complexity with with. Truly converting to solar. Are are a little deeper and and I think that as we. Go forward. Making sure the the code that that we were putting in place is flexible enough to. To allow for some of that is really important.
Commissioner Quavilla?
Uh, yes. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Buck. Great input regarding solar. There are a lot of things that. I hadn't hadn't heard about. I myself am a big fan of passive solar. And that's one of the reasons why I've brought this up, that I think. I really enjoy having my garden and my fruit trees and. The sun shining on the backside of my house. And I I know that that's a bit of a NIMBY thing, but. I certainly don't want to give it up. So that's why I've brought solar up and. Again, I appreciate everyone's comments on this.
I will just mention one last thing too. I think the the. Oregon Building Code and therefore our building code recently changed to. Require, I think it's pretty much required for single family homes for the roof structures to be solar ready. And I'm not sure of all the design standards around that. I think there's the weight component for loading. But I think there's also access for conduit or things like that. Not that it's. There's a certain definition of what solar ready means, but it definitely is is going down that path of having. Basically, every new single family home be at least designed upfront to at least anticipate for. The provision of solar. So anyway, that was a fairly recent, I would say within last year, change to the Oregon structural building code. So anyway.
Probably still worth mentioning that power in in our area is still, I think, five point two cents a kilowatt hour. You you know, I'm just saying. You know, am I gonna go out and spend twenty thousand dollars so I can save save a nickel? I think it'll get there, but I don't think we're there yet for for the masses.
Well, great discussion and input on that. We'll take a look at. That hybrid approach to what our existing code has in place and then see where we can get with that. So really, that's pretty much the extent of the kind of big picture topics that I was hoping to get input on tonight. I was hoping there might be more that the. Commission wants to bring up. We definitely, we were scheduled for a two-hour work session to give us plenty of time to talk about whatever. Maybe on the commission's mind, but I feel like we've gotten some good input and feedback. And again. Propose or offer up the opportunity to bring up any other. Code provision section, anything else that we were talking about. I don't know if putting Arva on the spot again, if there's anything. Arva has thoughts on or wanted to bring up before we. Start cutting short, but Arva, is there anything else we've talked about that I may be forgetting about or have missed?
Thought that's some thought that I can think of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. I just wanted to check. Sometimes my mind, you know, forgets things or things we might have talked about, some big ticket item that. I may have skipped, so. I'm not hearing anything else from the commissioners. I'm happy to, you know. Release the rest of my time back to the commission, let you do a little bit of your regular business and hopefully call it a little bit of early night than what was planned. So. I'll let you decide at that point.
Okay, we are out of our regular items on here, so. Any other items of business that should be brought before the commission? That being the case, well.
I think, well, and I don't want to speak for Sandy. Maybe Sandy's gonna be able to jump back on. I think there was some talk about adding to the agenda for some. Commissioner share different things on the agenda, Sandy. Did you?
Yeah, I apologize. I didn't see it on here. Still don't, but. Up to you.
Sure. So at your last meeting, I I forget who was ready to provide a council update. And you're. Tired and said, well, let's do that next time. So we have the. Your standard regular session items we added. So report of council action, business from the planning commission and business from the department. So. If any commissioners have. Any report on council action, if you've attended council meetings that you haven't had a chance to report on yet, now would be a good time.
I attended a council meeting a couple of weeks ago and I kid you not, that thing was nine minutes from start to stop and now. I just thought that was amazing. That is my report. Others, Commissioner Quavilla?
Uh, yes, that nine-minute one was actually supposed to be a meeting that I was supposed to attend. So I'm not sure how we. How we got our wires crossed on that, but I think Brenda has has been providing us. Oh, what days we attended? And then I think they're also up on Springfield, Oregon speaks. So that's maybe Brenda can start sending them out in our emails again. And we can keep it straight, so. But yeah, it was a short one.
Linda, would that be okay? Just sending out the reminders?
Um, I'll. Let that, I'll let Sandy decide on that since we had it before and then we, everyone wanted it on. Springfield Oregon speaks, so. We'll do it, you know, whatever we need to do.
Well, and I can use the website. I.
I mean, I guess what I could do at this point is make sure everybody is aware of how to look those up. So I'm going to share my screen. You can see here my Springfield, Oregon speaks, I'm assuming.
Yes.
So. Here's our meeting for tonight with the agenda, but if you go down. Here to the bottom, there's this for planning commissioners and this is the page we had. Developed just for you. We worked with People Speak, who is the creator of this platform. So if you go to here for planning commissioners. Here we have the schedule for council meeting attendance. And then we've added some other things that we know of, like the. Community conversation on the climate from the equitable communities. And we can add other information to this page. We have total control over this page, so. If you have other ideas, we can consider that. But this is where. We have the schedule for the planning commission. Attending the council meetings. So here we are on the sixteenth. So the next one would be Commissioner Bergen for the November twenty second meeting. Which is actually also in SITO will be speaking. Or having their session to hear from the developer that applied to the RFQ for Glenwood. So there's that. And I also, while we're here, wanted to. Let's see. If I go back up here to the homepage, there is, I wanted to point out for Commissioner Buck's. Benefit. Like on times when we've had comments. So here I can sort by planning commission and I'm going into the archives. Here. And so if there's some, I'm looking, I'm trying to. Think of one we've had some comments on. Like I think this one maybe. So this one will Amalay neighborhood bike park. There is this comment and feedback. And so there is a way for the planning commissioners. To view this if we log in and then people know how many planning commissioners have viewed that comment. So that is something you talked about with the city council in your joint work session. So there is that feedback that Commissioner Salazar pointed out. And in order to actually log in, you come down, it's hard for me to do that with this, but let's see here. Sorry. My other thing, Zoom thing pops up when I get down there too low. Anyway, down here. Is where you would go to actually log in as a commissioner. So you would click on the login, sign in, and then when you view the comment, it'll show up as having read it. So that's my quick tutorial on Springfield, Oregon speaks.
Yes, I just will add also that when you read it, there is a button that. I think an orange button that says red that you can click on and then that changes it. Changes your status to having read it, not just actually reading it, but you do have to click the button that says I read it.
Thank you both for that feedback. I I've seen that button. I just haven't clicked it. Because I I didn't really know that it, I didn't really know what it did. Sometimes I figure if I push buttons that I don't know what they do, I could do something I really don't want.
You can't break it, or if you do break it, we can fix it, so.
Okay, that's that's good to know. That's good to know. I I'm still kind of. It's a, it's a learning curve and so I appreciate all the feedback.
Well, I didn't know there was a button because I'm not, I I don't have or have that opportunity, so. I I didn't realize that that was something we needed to tell people.
So thank you. We've learned something tonight, too.
I appreciate you bringing it up. Thank you. Other business. That being the case.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Has, has there been any further discussion as to? I I know that the mayor was thinking about bringing counsel and those things back in January. Has that, has there been any further discussion on that?
I have not heard anything further on that. Your first meeting in January is a joint public hearing with Lane County. On the development code update. And I'm going under the assumption that that will be virtual rather than trying to bring the two bodies together. That you're, it will be a work session followed by a public hearing that that would be virtual. But subsequent to that, I I don't know. I mean, I had heard January two and I haven't heard anything since. But that brings me to the next question is. At this point, we don't have any agenda items scheduled for your meetings in December. Marx. Packet said that if there were items you wanted to discuss further, we could. Continue having work sessions on the code in December, once the public review draft has been released, but that's up to you. So we can either. Take the whole month off and reconvene January fourth, or if you wanted to meet, we could. Meet in December or even November thirtieth, if there was some reason you wanted to meet sooner rather than later.
Thoughts on how you'd like to do that? Is there anybody who would like, would vote in favor of meeting in December? I'm not seeing anything, so I think the vote is for December vacation and back on the fourth.
And I'll just share, I'm hoping to be in Africa in January, so I will not see you for your first two meetings in January. If all goes as I hope.
We're in Africa.
I'm going to Guinea, which is where I lived for several years. So I'm going back to visit some friends. Which is in West Africa.
Any other business for the committee, for the commission? I hereby adjourn the.
Travels to Sandy.
Thank you very much, everybody.
See you in the new year.